Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the reconvened budget hearings for Pittsburgh City Council for the 2022 budget. I'm Councilman Kraus, Chair of the Human Resources Committee. I'll be chairing today's budget hearing. We'll have limited comment from Councilman Wilson. When the time comes, but for now, we have our Budget Director Bill or Brad Bannick, who's going to give us a brief overview of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service. And then we have our Director Janet Manuel here as well, too, to give us the highlights of of her budget. So Director.
Thank you, Chairman Kraus. The mission of the Department of Human Resources Civil Service enables the city of Pittsburgh to meet its employee employment initiatives by providing skills and expertise in the areas that are imperative to successful business operation. The department is committed to developing a highly functioning workforce while respecting individual dignity, promoting and celebrating a diverse population, upholding applicable laws and regulations, and molding a positive corporate culture. There are several different general service areas that fall under Human Resources and Civil Service, Employment and Staffing, Policies and Procedures, Training and Development, Diversity and Inclusion, Benefits Administration, Absent Management, Wellness, which includes the City Fit Program, big fan, Employment Safety and Injury Prevention, Workers' Compensation, Payroll, and the Pittsburgh Partnership. Budgetary highlights on the operating end, the total budget is $34,595,522. That's an increase of $854,952. Total budget, total departmental budget, not including healthcare benefits, summer youth employment, $7,065,000, an increase of $753,000, or 12%. Total full-time positions of 35, that's a decrease of one from 2021, plus funding for part-time and temporary staff and 20 employees in the Pittsburgh Partnership Trust Fund. Salary and Positions Changes, Senior Talent Acquisition Coordinator is eliminated. Eliminated, excuse me, $67,778 reduction. $150,000 is added to the General Fund for the Pittsburgh Partnership Youth Program Staff. There's no changes to staffing within the Pittsburgh Partnership Trust Fund. Non-salary benefits and other subclasses changed across seven line items for net increase of $370,000. Most of that is from the Ceridian contract, as we spoke about in IMP yesterday. That payroll processing increased by $352,000. Professional Services decreased by $94,000. That's fire and police promotional exams. Computer Maintenance increased by $82,000. The Ceridian Benefits Module was the cost there. Recreation Services increased by $25,000, restoring the flexible childcare services to the 2020 funding levels. If you'll turn your page, members, you'll see on the other end. It's the more citywide benefits here. If you look at the 22 line, you'll see $94,684,000. That's due to health insurance mostly, and some of these other insurance benefits which are budgeted as we require by department as well, too. But you can see these budgetary line items as healthcare and health insurance costs continue to increase. You see a 5.2% increase there from $35 million to $37 million.
Seven million.
Yeah, also retiree health insurance from $23 to $24 million. And of course, the security as wages go up, those costs also go up. Unemployment compensation stayed the same. Workers' compensation went up a little bit, about 10%. The workers' compensation indemnity is actually reduced by $634,000, and will continue to do compensation, legal and settlements, which has helped to save funds over the past few years, past several years. We'll talk about the capital budget as well, too, that falls under Human Resources. Neighborhood Employment Centers, $150,000. That's the same as it's been in prior years. Pittsburgh Employment Program, $235,000. That's an $85,000 increase from 2021. This program has been increased, last been increased in 2014, so another thing that we we should look at and continue to do in the future here. Department of Human Resources also contains some trust funds and agency funds. Pittsburgh Partnership, as we had mentioned, used to be the JTPA WIA Trust Fund. Projected beginning balance, $4.5 million. Anticipated revenue, 3.27 million, a 2% decrease from prior years. Anticipated 2022 expenses, $3,650,000. That's a 0.1% increase from 2021. 20 full-time positions with no changes from 2021. Also, another trust fund is Workers' Compensation Commutations Trust Fund. Current balance is $3,835,000. Also, the Workers' Compensation Medical Payment Fund, current balance is $347,000. We also have a revolving fund called the VIBA Health Insurance Fund. Current balance is $13,390,000. And the VIBA Workers' Compensation Trust Fund, $26,335,000 is contained there. With that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. Director, welcome. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good to see you.
Good to be seen.
So you have a brief presentation for us as well?
I do. One, happy holidays to you and to Councilman Wilson and to the absent council members. So, you know, 2021, another year still within the pandemic, and the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service has continued to pivot, as always, to make sure that our work is meeting the needs of the employees of the city of Pittsburgh and their respective families, and our applicants, as well as the goals and objectives from Mayor Perduda's administration goals. So just to make an additional, a new comment, just to talk about why there is an increase to our budget. You know, in 2020, we rolled out the new payroll system, which is Ceridian Dayforce. And initially, that was placed and housed, that monies was placed and housed in the budget of the Department of Innovation and Performance. However, for the year of 2022, moving forward, it actually will be placed under the Department of HRCS. So that, I just wanted to provide some explanation as to why that increase is there. Please note the reason for the salary and position change. We are still always recruiting for talent. We are implementing a talent acquisition coordinator that will be specifically assigned to recruit and have full concentration on public safety. And then another talent acquisition coordinator will have focus on other positions within the city.
Public safety, I'm sorry, Director. Public safety defined as all four departments.
Yes. Yeah, public safety as in police, fire, and EMS, and animal care and control. Yes, the four departments. You are correct.
Thank you.
And so it's nice to see that, again, the compensation or the number of FTEs is flat, as we've always kept it, and just kind of reorganized and reallocated where the positions really are needed to meet the needs of the city. Other things that we have going on is in regards to capital and CDBG budget. Again, note that, yes, our budget year starts at the beginning of January. However, our respective CDBG monies does not really come in or given to us until the month of August. So even though you see that slight increase, it's not so much that we're spending more, but it's just that we're having to have that money upfront. And then once we get that money from CDBG, from the, from that in August, that will level it out. I know that we had our six Neighborhood Employment Centers, and for this year, hello, Councilwoman Strauss Berger, we've had 2,501 participants, and actually 178 obtained employment through the six NECs. And then of those 178 that obtained employment, 113 obtained full-time employment. So the rest were part-time. So it's very nice to see that the Pittsburgh Partnership is making that impact for those that were unemployed that lived within the city limits. They also had a very good year under the Learn and Earn Summer Program. 937 youth were deemed eligible to participate in the program. However, a total of 734 actually completed the full program. And some chose not to, you know, due to concerns still with COVID. We respect that stance, but it's been another good year for the Learn and Earn Program, all within, under Pittsburgh Partnership. When you look at workers' compensation, and I did know that, Councilman, there was a sigh of what is going on with that dollar amount when he mentioned that it increased. Please note that the workers' compensation that that is allocated each year based on updates on claims. So when you see that workers' compensation medical piece that increased by 10.5%, that change, that is due to the claims, which deals with the diagnoses that we have for workers' compensation. So that, I just wanted to share and explain why that, that slight uptick. And that is due to the respective diagnoses, as well as the care for the diagnoses under the employees that are out on workers' compensation.
The real shock for me, Director, was the expenditure of over $37 million in health insurance for city employees.
Yes, and I am going to
Staggering amount of money.
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that because as I have watched and seen the other budget hearings, I know that there were some questions that came up from other council members, specifically Councilman Wilson. I believe one of his questions that was asked was, what was the COVID-19 impact on benefits? And so to your point, Councilman Kraus, yes, there has been an increase. And so the increase means that our employees are being serviced, and they are going to their respective doctor. You know, Teladoc was known way prior to COVID. It had less than 5% usage. Once COVID-19 hit, Teladoc definitely ticketed up as far as utilization. And that is a good thing, because that means our employees are seeking medical attention. And so that does have an impact, to your point, Councilman Kraus, as to the cost that it has. Now, I can flip the coin and state, yes, there may have been that increase in the cost that we've had to pay. But then you can look at it on the flip side of the coin, you know, in a time period that hopefully our employees have been serviced, that will have given them treatment, that could have more preventative care, that in the upcoming years, our costs may increase if they had not gone to the doctor. So yes, there's a current uptick now. And to Councilman Wilson's question, how has COVID-19 impacted benefits? And that is that it has really highlighted the fact for our employees to take care of themselves medically. And we've seen an increase in annual doctor visits, which is a good thing, because that has slowed down the preventative cares for certain women over an age, and men over a certain age, they're having their preventative care completed. So yes, that too adds to the increase in the cost. But by having those preventative care procedures done, you know, the, the nice thing that we can say from a human resources standpoint, and from the healthcare standpoint, is that, yes, the cost may be impacted now, but it will lower the cost from a future standpoint.
And I didn't bring it up so much as to focus on the fact that it increased from the year before. We would have expected that. But more, more, not more importantly, but more in doing so to just to highlight to the public who's listening, that just one of the bills that we pay here every year is healthcare coverage for city employees, and that check is $37 million.
Yes.
That's a staggering amount of money. And it's just one, the budget this year is like 600 million, forgive my attitude. I think it's right around 600 million is the budget. It's a staggering amount of money and responsibility that we bear to care for city employees, just one expenditure.
Yes, and their families.
And their families, yeah.
And their families.
Yeah.
And I also note from watching the other hearings that there was another question. Hopefully, I answered your question, Councilman Wilson.
Oh, you answered it.
That there was a question from you regarding time clocks. And so, yes.
Do the dog and pony show. We just got right into the
I'm going straight, I'm, I'm answering your questions that I took note of. And you had questions regarding the time clocks. So yes, we are in what I call the pilot stage of the time clocks, and there's two aspects. So for the Department of Public Works, they actually will have the physical time clock. I don't know if you were on City Council at that time, but I do believe Councilman Kraus and Councilwoman Strausberger was. When I came to the table in 2018, 2019, they gave me the homework assignment to go back and speak to all of the respective unions and inquire of their support of the time clocks. And so that is why DPW will have the physical time clocks. And we, I just saw an email right before I came up that they are working, HRCS is working with the Department of IMP and the Department of Public Works. We've already identified areas where those can be placed, and they are working on installing those. And then we're going to be piloting the usage of those physical time clocks. Now, for the online time clocks, we have that also in pilot. Actually, the Department of HRCS is piloting that. And then we also have the Department of Permits, License, and Inspection. And we are taking one department at a time. So if there are any questions or any concerns, that gives us the opportunity to work specifically with that department to address it before we add on another department. So hopefully by, you know, second quarter of 2022, everyone should be on time clocks and no more paper time sheets and paper and pencil. It will be for the first time in the history of the city of Pittsburgh. So we're very excited to have that process implemented. Other things that we have done within the Department of Human Resources, you know, we've pivoted, and we continue to have a lot of employees now. We have 90% of our employees with their email addresses. That means they have the ability to access their payroll stub online. They also have the ability to review their payroll information without having to come to the fourth floor. Not that we don't want to see our employees, but again, from an equitable standpoint, it's more easier and convenient for our employees. You mentioned last year at the budget hearing, Councilman Wilson, that you had inquired
I am the presentation.
I'm answering all your questions, sir, from last year's budget meeting and this, and from the previous budget hearings for other departments. But you had inquired of, when will the self-service ability come in? So as you can see, that also is noted in the budget for 2022, that I hope that City Council will approve. And that is the addition of the benefits module. So I'm going to speak positive. Once City Council approves the budget for the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service, and that does include the implementation of the benefits module, then the self-service piece kicks into gear. So that means, hopefully in the year of 2022 for open enrollment, that we will be able to have things done online. So one of the things that we've talked about is that we've enjoyed for the past two years, because we had to implement the telephonic call for open enrollment, we want to continue that process because we've heard in the Department of HR and Civil Service, positive feedback from our employees of them actually speaking to a benefit coach that goes, that reviews all of their benefits that they're enrolled in, and also ensures that the employee is enrolled at the level that is beneficial for them and their family that will benefit them the most. So, you know, looking at 2022, we want to keep the telephonic piece of it, but then also, I don't want to just release everyone and say, just go online, but just kind of walk everyone through it. But that, I'm going to speak positive. Once City Council approves that, that is also in the budget for the Department of HR and Civil Service, and it is the benefits module. The other cool thing of implementing the benefits module for Ceridian Dayforce is that we will be able to activate a module that does exist in Ceridian, and it is known as the onboarding module. And so that, to your point, Councilman Wilson, that is that we will be able to do more online self-service for new hires. And that's, that's going to be an exciting opportunity for, for applicants when they are, once they become from being an applicant to an actual employee. And I wanted to point that out as
What is that? Again?
Once, it will benefit the person who, they'll be an applicant at the time, and then once they become an employee, the onboarding, there will be an online piece to it.
Nice, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, line item.
And then that will get us to almost a full, what is known as a human resource information system. Almost, we're close.
Where's that module?
That is the benefits module, and I believe that Bill Herbannick had mentioned it. It's under non-salary, non-benefit subclasses, the professional server, the computer maintenance.
Okay. So it just increases by, I'll say my question. I'm just, I'm just playing with you. That's all you have. You ask anything you want to take as long as you like.
I thought I answered all of your questions, Councilwoman.
Take as, as long as you like, as long as you finish in 90 seconds, we're, we're good.
Go ahead.
Okay. Now, this is great. It warms my heart. So I just said to Councilperson Strausberger, you know, appreciate you following up on all those questions.
You are welcome.
You know, I just can't help myself, you know, coming from, you know, previous, I told you, you know, working for the University of Pittsburgh, and I thought they did a phenomenal job. Not that you don't do a phenomenal job, but there was, there were, you know, yeah.
We're getting there as a city.
And so, like, is this, was this, is this new?
Yes, the city employee internet portal is new. And so the, the department we worked with IMP, I do believe, sir, you and I had a conversation about that last year.
Yeah, I love it.
What you are seeing, what, for those that are listening, what Councilman Wilson is showing me on his laptop is the improved internet.
I think if I, I think if I talk, it shows up, maybe.
I don't
Show up, show up.
The cameras on the director.
So what Councilman Wilson is showing is the improved city employee internet portal. And so he and I, not, I think a couple of years ago, I think right as you
Right when I came in.
Were elected, you had a meeting with the department, and you shared with me at that time different, one was your previous employer and other employers of how they had their website set up. And my comment to you was, yes, I totally agree, and we are going to get there because, believe it or not, both of us have the same vision.
Yeah.
That was to eliminate a lot of the verbiage. So normally, when people log on, they would just see a bunch of words. And so what we have done is just edit what is known as quick links. And so I have to give a shout out to Ian O'Neill, who is our Business Resource Manager, the best, if I must say so. And he worked with, he made sure that that project was on, and that we still have some improvements to do on it. But it is, it's a lot cleaner, it's a lot smoother, it's a lot slicker, a lot easier on the eyes. So that way, our employees can just click instead of having to go through and stream down to get the information.
I really like how there's, um, you know, it has that quick link, but also, like, initially, whenever everyone comes on their computer, they open up the browser, and immediately, you have to, this is your, your landing page.
Correct.
And that's what is great, because then, you know, the employee, they can see announcements if they, you know, if you're going to access that. But then also, you're creating all these different links, and we were talking about training, there's a training tab.
Yes.
Yeah, I like it. Because then, I'm thinking, you know, long term, if there's, if there's anything that could be added for, like, you know, in an apartment, for instance, PLI. If it's employee-specific, then they would know
Where to go.
Where to go. And then, you know, hopefully, we can implement it that way. So thank you so much.
You are welcome.
And I'm excited to see all the, all the questions that you've answered that I've asked in previous, you know, whether it was last year or another budget hearing. But, so, in terms of the the increase from, you know, this year with benefits, so it sounds like it's a use increase, more than
Claims.
More than claims.
Processing. Well, it's, it's
Claims.
The cost of the claims. And so if you have a higher utilization, then of course, you would have a higher claims percentage. And that is the driver. So, so we hope, you know, the positive thing is that people are doing a lot of their preventive care appointments, and that they are not utilizing the ER, and they're utilizing the respective resources that are out there that can provide just as much medical attention and service to them versus, you know, the emergency room.
Yeah, what I like about, you were mentioning the telemedicine, and there's a little tab here. I'm not sure if I gotta, I gotta go to resources. Will you benefit somewhere? But anyway, there's a telemedicine tab. And that walks you through exactly how to get on that. If I was just there, but anyway.
Right.
Easy enough, and
Right.
informative, and just like, you know, as it continues to grow, then, just like you said, the, you know, whenever, every year, people gotta say whether or not they're gonna keep the plan they have, or move on, that's gonna be added. And then also with the retirement, the additional retirement that people can sign on, the 457.
457.
See that, and it just looks a lot cleaner. So I appreciate all that. The, um, what's the question?
It's Monday, too.
I don't know. You answer so many questions. I should just, I should just be so thankful. And I am, I am. I really appreciate it.
I did tease Councilman Kraus. I think he's going to take over the
Yeah, I don't think I can.
Well, we could, you know, committee assignments come up in January. You'd miss me.
He's trying to take over.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, you have a question, comment?
Well, thank you, Director. And I know I missed the beginning of your presentation. I apologize, but I was listening back there, and I was, I was studying this. I guess just to follow up on Councilman Wilson's questions, I was unaware of this refreshed internet portal, and I'll have to peruse that and familiarize myself. But, you know, one of the questions I had was, how well, and it'll relate back to this in a second, how well were those benefits coaches utilized? Has that been increasing, ticking upwards?
Yeah, so this, you know, our first year, we rolled it out last year due to COVID, and that, you know, there wasn't, I would say there was about 500 calls in. And so this year, there was over 1,400 calls. And so that was the nice sign that employees really did, you know, take advantage of this opportunity. Because, you know, we in HR, we know, we can explain the benefits, you know, like the back of our hands. We can just say it real quick, and we can just recite it. But it was nice to have those benefit coaches be on the line to explain to the employees what they currently were enrolled in, and then what their options are. But it also was a nice reminder for the employees that we always tabbed in and said, make sure that you keep your beneficiaries updated. If you haven't, then you go to the Department of HR, just giving them those respective tips. So that way, if something did happen, then, then all of their, you know, paperwork and everything would be done in accordance. But yeah, there were over 1,400 calls this year.
Great. I saw the emails. Despite that, I did not set Despite that, I did not set up an appointment, which I'm now regretting, and I will next year, but I saw the emails. So you really did a great job of publicizing that. And I know that from my experience, first coming on as an employee and then running for office, you know, this was eight years ago. You get the binder, you choose one, but then two years later, you have to remember, what's my, what's my vision plan? What did I sign up for? Is it the one that I circled like? And you have to ask someone. And so I guess my question is, that's a great once a year opportunity to refresh and sort of remind the reminders for what you need to do personally for your family or coverage or beneficiaries or who's covered, whatever, whether the terminology is. Can you, do we have the capacity right now to be able to look that up? You have a question about what's my, what's in my, what are my benefits? Can you look that up?
Once the benefits module is implemented.
Is that what he just asked? Maybe it was different language I wasn't understanding, but.
So once the benefits module is implemented, so let's say City Council approves, yay.
Yeah.
Then starting, then I come back before the table, probably in January, and then you approve. So that way I can start working with Ceridian Dayforce and then we start the implementation plan, which will need, you know, at least, you know, six to nine months. So that way we can try and have this implemented before open enrollment of two thousand and twenty-three. So that means I would come to the table, January or February of two thousand and twenty-two. City Council approves, then HR starts working with Ceridian on the implementation. And then that would take us like from March all the way through August or September or the beginning of September, because then open enrollment is October. And then, once that benefits module is up, just as you have access to go online to look at your respective pay stub, then you would have the ability to go online throughout the year to see what you are actually enrolled in.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That'll be incredibly helpful. I mean, just.
The self-service piece.
Yeah, exactly. Sometimes that's a hurdle, it shouldn't be, but sometimes it feels like a hurdle to pick up the phone and call and to have to find someone, track someone down or email someone. What is, what do I sign up for again, you know?
Right. And unfortunately, there are some employees that have to come, they have to pay for their parking, just run up to the fourth floor, ask that question.
And where am I at? Like, what are my current benefits?
Right.
Now, and you could see that.
I know, I forget every, every year. If I'm not using it, I forget what I have signed up for, so.
The Councilwoman Straussberger's point, eight years and not everyone always remembers what they enrolled in or the level.
Okay, that's great news. Well, you know, you know, who knows what will, what discussions will ensue when it comes to the January, February approval. But I, you know, I'm really enthusiastic about this piece of it, so.
Got it.
Thank you. And just going back to yesterday's hearing, we have to make sure that we have the IMP kind of business managers or project managers, you know, the capacity there to be able to help projects like these succeed as they're implemented, so.
So I give a shout out to Ian O'Neill.
Yeah, yeah, we need to keep Ian and all the others. I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Wilson, I think has one more item up for discussion. Yes?
Yeah, I have to say, it is a, it is wonderful to see you at the helm there.
For a long time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I've missed all those six years of you, you know, chairing the, the hearings and everything. So it's great, it's great to see you back.
Yeah, thank you. I really, I, I enjoyed that time very, very much.
You look good in it, yeah. All right, so the question is about the neighborhood employment centers.
Yes, there are.
It was, that was great to hear the amount of, can you say that again, how many?
Sure. So we now have a total of six neighborhood employment centers. Madam President Kell Smith, there was one open in her respective district, but they had seen two thousand five hundred and one participants throughout all six neighborhood employment centers for the year and that a hundred and seventy-eight obtained employment and that one hundred and thirteen obtained full-time employment. And so the purpose of the neighborhood employment centers for the constituents that are listening, it is a great resource that you can go and get assistance to find employment, to type up your resume. You also have the ability to see the job openings that are available for the city of Pittsburgh. But you also have the ability to do like your typing, practicing on your typing exam before you take a clerical, you know, test here to get, to gain employment with the city. So the neighborhood employment centers, you know, there are six of them in the respective districts of the council members, and they really are a great free resource to the constituents to help them, whether they want to just update their resume or create a resume or obtain interviewing tips, et cetera.
Now, is that, you said a hundred and seventy-eight and you said roughly a hundred for.
Hundred and thirteen had full-time.
Yeah, but those combined are the ones that are employed or is it a hundred and thirteen of the?
Thirteen out of the hundred and seventy-eight obtained full-time and then the rest were part-time employment.
Oh, okay, great. Do we track any other data on that? Like where, like what sector or?
I don't have that information. I can follow up and see if that data is tracked. I.
Yeah, if we're allowed to see that, and I'm also wondering like, how much of that increase compared to prior years?
I can, I can ask.
Are you making your list for next year's budget?
I'm going to follow up with them by the end of this year.
I just think it'd be great to, maybe have, yeah, I think it'd be great to have an understanding of maybe, you know, where.
Sure.
You know, I, I understand. I don't, it's not like we're trying to.
Has that number increased? I would hope that it has, but I, I understand.
And obviously Career Link is the, that's the state, right? The state has Career Link and they.
Career Link works with Partner for Work in the state you are.
Yeah, and so they obviously are tracking.
They have.
Whatever they're tracking. But yeah, I would just be curious of these neighborhood things of where, what, you know, what sector people are going into.
Sure.
That's great. Would you expand that at all? Do you think it's, you think it's, me? You know, in the time of COVID, where you had, you know, increased unemployment, is there, you know, like how useful, how impactful do you think that was?
How impactful do I believe that the, do I think the neighborhood employment centers have been for the respective neighborhoods? Absolutely.
It's only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're talking about? That's what I see?
Right, that is correct.
We spent a one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on.
Centers.
And, you know, close to two hundred people got employed. That's.
Correct. And how impactful do I think it is? And it is very impactful. I do know that Councilwoman Gross is not here, but she is one of my fellow gender equity commissioners. And so, you know, one of the things that we are doing under the GEC is a pay equity program. I actually have a final training tonight at five o'clock where we are educating women. Women were the most impacted during COVID. That is why it is nicknamed She Session. There were more women that, first of all, prior to the pandemic, there were more women employed. Once the pandemic hit, more women were negatively impacted. Several reasons why. One, if they were married, they made less than their spouses. So therefore, when it came to the decision of who was going to stay home with the children or take care of the elderly parents, it was the female. Two, women also work more in the lower wage positions that were negatively impacted due to COVID. And three, when you look at the total amount of women, that there was over two million that were negatively impacted, and so that is why it is called the She Session. It was the women who unfortunately bearred the burden of losing their jobs because they were misplaced because they worked in the more lower wage positions. And when you look at the number of companies that displaced workers, it was the women that was more displaced than the men. Those are the three reasons why it is now called or nicknamed the She Session. And so what we're doing for the Gender Equity Commission is working with American Association of Women, AAUW. And we're doing free, one-hour training sessions to help provide a skill set to the, to any woman, whether they're impacted by the loss of a job or that they want to ask for an increase. Because we all know that women are paid less than men. Not that it's right, but they are paid less than men and that black and brown women are paid even lesser compared to the Caucasian woman. But the fact remains that all women are paid less than men and it is two thousand and twenty-one. And so what the Gender Equity Commission is doing is providing these free trainings. This is our last one for the year, but we are going to continue them in the year two thousand and twenty-two as well to educate women on how to know, one, know their worth, know their value and know that they have the right to ask for an amount of money that is comparable, not so much to what the, to what someone else, you know, they think they should be paid, but what their worth is and the comparable amount of what that job wage is, that, that range. And so I kind of go on my rampage of.
I like it.
That is why the neighborhood employment centers in the greater Pittsburgh area that is provided free by the city of Pittsburgh is within all the districts. There's six, not all the districts, we're missing three. But that is a free resource for our employees. And so, yes, I do see the value of the NECs. I see the value of the work that the Gender Equity Commission is doing to help educate women because they have been negatively impacted and the most impacted by this unfortunate COVID nineteen.
Since you brought it up, how are we doing as, as an employer with, with wages with, you know?
Sure. So there's this misnomer that government pays inequitable for men and women. The beauty of how we have it set up here for the city of Pittsburgh and, and really for a lot of local government organizations is that we're, we're different in the fact from the private sector world. Because I can speak to that because that's where I came from. The private sector world has more of the inequity due to the fact that, one, their compensation is private. No one knows. And so if you are hired, Councilman, for the same position as a face mask wearer, as Councilwoman Straussberger, the private sector can pay you more and they can use their reasons or rationales as to why, and no one would know. In the public sector, if you look at our budget, you can see for yourself that if we hire a firefighter year one, whether that firefighter is a male or a female, that compensation is the same. If you hire someone in the Department of Human Resources, whether that person is a male or a female and they're hired as a business and wellness coordinator, that compensation is the same. So it's very pleasing to say that what we are doing for the city of Pittsburgh, that we have equitable compensation regardless of their gender. What some people are mixing up is trying to say, let's compare the number of males to female compensation. We know that there are more male police officers than female police officers. So that's an inequitable comparison when you do an average salary of male police officers to the average salary of female police officers because you're not comparing apples to apples. Because there's a difference in the number of females that we have on the force versus males. If you look at the, the more comparable comparison is to look at how many sergeant females we have compared to male sergeants and the compensation is the same. Now, if you have the years of service, because someone has more years of service and they might be a little higher, that is understandable and that is equitable pay because someone has been on the force longer. But as far as hiring someone, we are not hiring John Doe and strawberry shortcake at two different compensations. So that's a misnomer, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify that, that the city of Pittsburgh has a very fair and equitable compensation package for all people who have interest in seeking and gaining employment with us as well as those that are current employees of ours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You do a fabulous job. Thank you for, thank you for, thank you for everything.
You're welcome. With that.
Now you understand why I said what I said, Councilman? I'm sticking with you.
Committee assignments come up in January. If I can impose on you, can you hang by past about ten minutes?
It's on my calendar.
Yeah, oh, good. Perfect. We're going to discuss making certain that employees have an avenue to opt into the pension offset requirement to opt in. So we're going to make sure we get that handled today. Did I ever tell you this in the budget hearing where somebody threw a gavel? Did we ever talk about that one?
I gotta watch the video. I haven't, I haven't watched the video yet. We could do like a parody thing.
But anyway, yeah, thank you. I appreciate you just come back.
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, I'm going to offer up a few meeting announcements. We will have Thursday morning, nine AM on December the ninth. We will have the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure budget hearing that will be chaired by Councilman Coghill. There are no budget hearings on Friday, December the tenth. But on Monday, December thirteenth, it's that time again, we will have the public hearing on the tax budget and citizens' participation hearing at ten AM. And then at one thirty PM, we will have our line item vote on the two thousand and twenty-two budget. It's flying by. We'll take our preliminary vote on Wednesday and our final vote on following Monday. It's flying by. And speaking of the tax participation hearing, I know a number of the food groups always come out for that. We have made allotments and allocations like we normally do, have we not?
I believe so.
We should, like, let's follow up on that. Can we please?
Absolutely.
Okay, but with that, I am, do I need to call for the recess or just announce the recess?
Your announcements and then you recess this meeting.
As a motion. I'm, I'm a little rusty. I haven't done this in a while. So it's a motion to recess.
It is.
Meetings in recess. Yeah, so meetings in recess and we'll resume on Thursday, tomorrow morning at ten AM. We're done. Thank you.